Thank you for joining us today to hear from the three candidates running to represent trustee area four on the Claremont Unified School District School Board. I am Rachel Forster and will be today's moderator. Jessica McLaughlin will be timing. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction, two minutes to answer each question, and one minute to close. Today's questions have been sourced from teachers, parents, former board members, local nonprofits, and the community at large. Starting off the introductions is Alex McDonald.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for hosting this forum and really appreciate the time to share who I am and my perspective. Everyone asked me, why am I running for school board? Why am I doing this? So I'll start with that. I'm a family medicine physician. I practice at Kaiser Permanente. And one of my biggest challenges that I see in my office has nothing to do with my training as a physician. There's no medication in the world I can do that I can prescribe which will treat chronic stress or food insecurity or housing insecurity. And all these issues which result in poor health are rooted in poor education. We know that when when kids and when individuals get the robust education which really meets their needs as an individual, they can thrive. They can become more successful personally, professionally, academically, you name it, which basically improves their health. So my role, my reason for becoming a physician was to really improve the health of my community. And if I can help implement policies at the school board level which will impact thousands of individuals and improve the education of thousands of individuals, that's far more beneficial than my seeing patients one at a time. I love seeing patients one at a time. And it's very personally and professionally fulfilling, but I want to make sure that we really move upstream. And if we can prevent illness and we can promote health, that that is foundational in very good education. As a scientist and a physician, I believe strongly in database policies and database decision making and not sort of whatever's popular at that moment in time. I am very, I believe very deeply in collaborative work together. If we if we want to go fast, we go alone. We want to go far to get, we go together. And I'm really passionate about inviting everyone to the table and really working collaboratively and building relationships to best meet the entire community of CUSD. Thanks much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Aaron Peterson.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having this forum. It's another opportunity to meet and talk with the community, and it's really appreciated. My name is Aaron Peterson. I'm a father of three. I've got three students at Condit. Mary, I'm a fortunate one who married a Claremonter. She grew up here. And we moved back here in 2019, mostly because of the education system, and we've got good family here. And so it was really, we bought a house and it was, you know, let's set down roots and let's really get involved in the community. And this was on the list of those things that really helped me connect with the community and actually, you know, make a change for the good for the people that are out there and the people we interact with on a daily basis. I worked for Lockheed Martin, been with them for almost eighteen years now. I'm an engineer, and so my background is a lot of data digging and troubleshooting, finding out why things don't work and why they didn't work, and then how we can improve a process and make it better. And just looking to continue running. I did run last year in 2022. And we're here again. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Aaron. And now Joshua.
Hello, thank you for inviting me. This is my first forum. I unfortunately had to miss the the last one as I was out of the country. But I think I'm going to be recording something with with Russ a little bit later this week. So yeah, my name is Josh Rogers. I'm fifty-two. I have two children at Chaparral. They're in kindergarten and first grade, Max and Remy. I've been living in the Claremont area for the last seven years. I volunteer a lot. I volunteer weekly at Chaparral, where I do the groups on Wednesday morning. I also coach Little League. I'm a volunteer court-appointed special advocate for kids. It's called CASA for Kids and the Dependency System. And I also have a nonprofit called Art Kids where kids paint in a professional gallery and encourages kids just to become involved in the arts. My goal as a trustee and the reason I'm running is because I want to increase community engagement and the board level decisions in the school district. And increase the the amount and clarity of information that's available to everybody. By doing so, I want to empower the entire community to participate in these decisions that help our children thrive in education. In particular, I found the decision to appoint a candidate for the recently vacated seat to be less than transparent. And that's why I led the petition to call for the special election that we're now all participating in. My background is I own businesses in the hospitality industry. Prior to that, I was a management consultant and advised the boards of very large corporations. I'm multilingual and spent more than a decade living abroad. I studied Russian literature at Amherst College, and I have an MBA in finance from the University of Chicago.
Thank you. We'll begin our questions now. We'll be rotating through the candidates for each question. So this first candidate will, or this first question will go to Aaron. If and when CUSD faces a budget shortfall, what means would you favor to create a balanced budget?
Budgets are always hard to balance. I work with budgets on regards to millions of dollars with work, and oftentimes it comes down to what are your sources of income? If you can't bring in more income, then you're looking at what income you have and how it can be used to its maximum efficiency. And oftentimes, unfortunately, the end of that list ends up being cuts, but rather than cutting whole, maybe a half. Instead of firing, can someone go part-time? Instead of a program running all the time, can it run with fewer students? There's always a tough decision to make, but it should be one where we come together and actually, you know, understand the situation and also plan for the future. Just because, you know, you have a shortfall now doesn't mean that there's not going to be more later and prepare for that more when it comes. And when it does, then reinvigorate the community and the money to to boost yourself back up to that level so that you can continue to do better with what you've got and plan for the next time there's a shortfall.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Joshua. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, no, that's okay. I remember. Let me first say that you know, I think it's a it's sort of a national tragedy that the the funding for public education has decreased so much in the, you know, in the past decades and perhaps has accelerated in the past ten years or so. You know, I think investment in education is the best investment that that a country can make or that a politic can make. And, you know, I don't know if there's much I can do at the school board level to increase that funding, you know, state state provided and federally provided funding, but that will certainly be, you know, one of the top things on my list and, you know, sort of. If you look at goals writ large, that would be, you know, one of my, one of my goals in politics going forward. Yeah, frankly, I mean, you know, in order to make a decision on how to cover a budget shortfall, that's a very technical decision that's based on very specific information. You know, at the time that we don't have access to as, you know, as parents or as community members. So it's a bit of a hypothetical question. You know, I guess what I can say is that in so doing, I would, you know, I would strive to to, you know, to garner as much funding as possible for the education of our children. And, you know, within the limits of the law to spend as much as possible on that education in Claremont. I think a big part of it, actually, you know, one, one big factor here that I think is not you know, widely known or widely discussed is that a lot of our funding comes because we have about a third of our student population coming from outside of the district. And, you know, that large amount of students, you know, that that number can sort of ebb and flow based on various things. And it's something that, you know, can certainly affect the budget, especially insofar as like, you know, the capacity that we have. If we were to suddenly lose a third of our student base, we would, of course, not have enough money to support the the infrastructure we have, which would require, of course, reduction in infrastructure. That would be bad. I see the stop.
Thank you so much. And Alex, please.
Great, thanks so much. So, you know, there are some storm clouds on the horizon regarding budgetary issues right now. You know, if that becomes a reality, I think it's really important that we 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 sit down and collaborate. We all work together to figure out where where we make those those hard choices and where we have to make those cuts. I think the key obviously is to find out what which impacts the classroom least, which impacts the teacher, which impacts the students least when it comes to the classroom and their education piece. There's all these other parts which are really important to supporting student learning as well, too. But I think if we all sort of sit down and work very collaborative collaboratively and if everyone sort of, you know, takes a little hit, so to speak, as opposed to one single program being completely cut or scrapped, too. So I think, you know, if we all, we all work together and we all collaborate, we we're going to make the best decision as well, too. I think it's really important that we continue to partner with our community-based organizations. And if the school district isn't able to support a certain program or a certain funding, can we partner with a community-based organization which is doing that work as well, too? And so we can all kind of collaborate and support one another as opposed to this person doing or this group doing the same thing that the school district is kind of doing, and that we don't duplicate resources as well, too. I think it's really important that we also look, look for grants and different and new innovative ways to support our students and our and our teachers as well, too. That's obviously ebbs and flows and can be a full-time process in and of itself, too. But I think there's lots of potential ways that we can all work collaboratively to to make sure that we we kind of make those hard decisions together as opposed to sort of having just one, one voice or even the the school board make those decisions, too. It's really needs to be a collaborator process.
Thank you. This next question will go to Joshua. It came to us from Sustainable Claremont. How can Claremont Unified School District implement structural changes to incorporate greater sustainable practices district-wide? For example, electrifying infrastructure to get rid of fossil gas, working towards a no idle policy or ordinance at the pickup and drop-off lines at school, recycling and composting programs, adopting solar, et cetera.
Let's see here. Well, those are all great ideas. I think that's, you know, it's it's obviously incumbent upon all of us to kind of get over this this hump that we're facing climate-wise. You know, I think there's a lot of things that that, you know, those, those are all great things. And there's, you know, there's a long list of them out there. You know, I don't have any, to be quite honest, specific sort of ideas that I'm championing. I do know that, you know, solar is becoming more viable. I mean, I guess the thing, well, there's, there's two goals here. Let me put it this way. It's important to teach children that we have a climate problem, right, and that we need to, you know, to 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 work towards a more sustainable thing. And I think that's the most important thing that the school system can do. So that if we do have, you know, if we have solar panels on our schools, then the most important thing we can do is teach the eight thousand students that we have why they're there and, you know, why they're important and how they how they should be used more going forward. If we have a composting program, it's the same thing. You know, whatever we do climate-wise as a school district, you know, the the leverage is in, you know, is in instilling the importance of that in the in the kids rather than, you know, the actual impact that we may have on, you know, on on emissions, et cetera. Although that's also important. So I think whatever we do, the key thing is education and how to, you know, really get the point across to the kids.
Great, thank you. Alex?
Thanks so much. So, you know, there's no question that that climate change and more severe weather events impacts our health in different ways. When there's a heat index warning, people are more likely to have health issues as well. When there's a poor air quality, you know, people with asthma and other respiratory illnesses have more challenges as well, too. So I completely agree that that education is really, really important here. Again, we, as a school district, that's one of our key goals really is to educate our children, educate our community. I think reaching out to parents as well and helping parents understand, you know, if you're sending your kid to school with a lunch in a, in a plastic bag, you know, that is going to just end up becoming waste as well, too. So are there are there ways we can help even a little bit if we all do a small amount, if we can help educate our students, we can educate our our parents as well, too. And then as a school district ourselves, are there ways that we can reduce waste as well? I was actually walking past CHS the other day and kind of one of those wrappers from one of the school lunches had blown across the street, you know, something as small as that is making sure we we engage individuals to 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 join and to to clean up our our community as well, too. I love the idea of a no idling policy outside the schools when when you're when you're waiting to pick up your students. Sort of, sort of panels have have been tremendous. I think we need to continue to to think about green investment when we think about our capital and our infrastructure planning as well, too. So I think those are all different, different parts of the puzzle. And I think as as a community, as a school district, I think making sure that we, we again, we we plan not for the present but for the future. And I think incorporating climate and sustainable practices within our own infrastructure and with our own practices is really, really important as well.
Thank you. And Aaron?
Can I have the first part of the question first?
Absolutely. How can the Claremont Unified School District implement structural changes to incorporate greater sustainable practices district-wide?
I'm going to use a example, a couple of the students actually is talking to Alexander Chang, one of the student board members, as well as one of the sixth graders at Condit. And it's, it's one thing to put plans in place and implement change and address things in different manners or come up with different ways to do things. But it all comes down to the people that are active, that are there to that middle ground between the problem and the solution. One of the things Alexander talked about was when he was doing his final tour as student board, our student school board member, was that he noticed that there's a lot of trash around the schools. And it's like, well, you know, if we have trash cans and we have trash, why aren't the two together? It's because as people, we have to solve, we have to be willing to solve the problem. So it comes down to education. And one other thing was my daughter's Girl Scout troop actually wrote a letter to the school board about not enough recycling. And that is true at Condit. I've noticed that there isn't enough recycling bins, but I've seen it at school and seen it everywhere. A lot of times it's, yeah, there's a recycling bin, but there's trash in it. So it's not doing the job we designed it to do. So let's not waste effort doing something unless we can actually go to the full extent. Let's not recycle unless it's effective and efficient. But let's go back to educating people because, you know, teach them why, why we do it. Not just you have to recycle. Let's say, well, we're recycling because we reuse it. We're reducing costs. We're being friendly to the environment. We're being friendly to wildlife, et cetera. And I think, I see the thirty. I think in regards to climate change as a whole, everyone does need to get a little more educated on it. The International Panel for Climate Change has published a great many findings that oftentimes it's always taken with alarmism. And there's a lot of material out there to decipher through, but some of the experts out there are calling me, calling, are calling the shots. And it's like, you know, it's not apocalyptic, you know, it is an issue. We do need to address it. But let's not make it catastrophic because that's not something we need to teach kids. It's let's teach them how to deal with it, not scare them with it.
Thank you. This next question will go to to Aaron again. School board members are responsible for protecting the interest of all. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. We're to Alex now. Mental health support is a big and growing need for Claremont students and staff. What are your thoughts on the topic and or specific ideas to address the mental health needs in CUSD?
Oh, man, how much time do we have? No, I'm just teasing. Again, as a, as a physician, this is something I I have been trained specifically to diagnose and to treat. And and mental health is, is an issue. It was a growing issue before COVID. And then COVID just kind of elevated it to a whole new level when it comes to our students, when it comes to our teachers. The mental health is a huge, huge factor. There's no way that you can show up and be your best self in a classroom to learn, in the classroom to teach, or our staff to to help provide the all, all the, all the amazing support they provide for our our district as well, too. If we are not mentally mentally well and mentally healthy as well, too. So I think it's absolutely critical that we continue to to think about this and invest in these programs. Continue our work with Tri-City Health, which has been very, very beneficial. Counselor, support staff, I think educating parents, educating teachers, and then and then really educating students about the importance of mental health. I think if anything, one of the silver linings of this of this pandemic has been to sort of raise, raise the awareness and the ability to normalize mental health and to talk about it. And if you're not doing well, to seek out help and not sort of suppress it and and think that it's sort of weakness to it to admit that you need help. So I think we need to continue to to lead by example as parents, as teachers, as leaders in our community as well, too. The other issue here is that I like to use the analogy that that mental health is like brushing your teeth. It's so individualized, you have to do it for yourself. You don't want anybody else brushing your teeth for you, right? And so it really depends on the individuals the individuals' needs, because it's going to change over time as well. And so I think early intervention, I think early tools, multiple different sort of options so that people can sort of choose which support they need most specifically, be it our students, our teachers, our staff, and our community as a whole.
Thank you. Aaron?
This goes back to, I was just saying in the last question, a lot of this is going to come down to information, educating people. I was actually looking for the study so I could reference it by name. But one of the biggest things that they're starting to find out about social media is how it's affecting kids, especially younger kids. And that's probably the biggest change that's happened in the latest generation. A lot of us grew up without social media, or we did. It was had to go sit down at a desk to interact with social media. Kids these days know how social media is sitting in their pocket on their phone. And so they're on it all the time. University of California, Stanford, did a study in regards to how much time kids are actually spending on the phone, and some of that information was alarming. And so it all comes down to, you know, let's let's equip the parents so that they can understand what their kids are doing and the negative and positive effects of the interactions that they're having. Because one of the ones that was really concerning to me was a study about TikTok. When you create a profile and you punch in your age at thirteen, which in United States is the lowest legal age in which an individual can have a social media account, without ever clicking on a video, it is already catered to show them so much negative information. And so you get a young kid growing up, grabs a phone, you know, first time they've got it, and they get on TikTok or whatever, and they've got catered flood of negative information. What does that tell them as a human when it's so much garbage without perspective, without nuance, without someone actually saying, hey, that's not exactly how it works. That's not, you know, let's sit down and be real about this. So I think there's a large portion of reality that parents, educators, and children all need to kind of get together and say, you know, how were we raised? Because we didn't have a vast mental health crisis for Generation X or for Millennials. It's like, no, there's something that's changed. Let's address that change, but let's not get rid of it. It has its positives. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joshua, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, it's okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, both, both of the guys had very good things to say that really resonated with me. I mean, as far as, you know, my personal experience with mental health, I have, one of my older sons is was diagnosed with the, you know, with a mental illness. I've kind of experienced that over the the past four or five years. And that was, you know, that was new for me. My sister is a, is a therapist, and she works in a school now in Alaska. So, you know, I sort of have a you know, a bit of a context. I haven't, haven't struggled with that myself, at least, you know, on a medically diagnosable level. But, you know, what I, what I have noticed, you know, sort of raising this, the second batch of kids is that things are just much, much more, they're just much different, you know, generally, you know, than when I grew up with the social media, with the computer. Now we're going to have, you know, AI and chatbots. And it's just, it's, it's a whole different world out there. And you know, it's, we're, we're not of that world. The kids are, though, so they're going to understand it much, you know, in a, in a much, much deeper way than we do. And it's going to be, it's going to be hard for us to sort of keep up and to, you know, to understand and recognize the challenges that they face. But I think the, you know, and this was also already mentioned, but I think the main thing is, is that one, you know, we want to de-stigmatize differences in general and also in this, you know, in in this arena. So that you know, to anything we can do to reduce the stigma around, you know, this person being mentally ill or this person having this issue so that, you know, so that they're able to, you know, access resources and not be sort of pushed into the margin, I think is is very important. You know, educating children that, you know, this is, this is okay. This is fine. This is something that now that we have to deal with and not something that should be hidden. And that applies to lots of other areas of development as well. And then the other thing is just to, yeah, to, you know, to make resources more available on a, on a consistent basis, like brushing your teeth, as was mentioned. You know, it's not something that you you get only when you're you're sick or when you have a crisis. But it's something that you get a little bit of each day. I think that would be awesome if, you know, if we could institute something like that.
Thank you. All right, this next question will go to Aaron. School board members are responsible for protecting the interests of all students regardless of disability, ethnicity, religion, gender, or sexual orientation. What specific actions would you like to take as a board member to protect and promote the interests of marginalized students?
I'd say regardless of the labels that can be applied to people, I think oftentimes it comes down to meeting with an individual and actually, you know, because in the end, we're all individuals. We can put labels on anybody down to the umpteenth degree. And by the time you get there, you actually realize, well, all those labels define one person. So let's address it from the personal point of view and start with kindness. Don't make any assumptions about where that person is coming from. Don't make any assumptions about the fights that are going on in their life, emotional, physical, mental. But meet them with kindness and find out, you know, what's, what's their perspective? Not what is a committee saying, not what is a study saying, not what is, you know, how we've always done it. But let's find out what they're talking about. What is it that they need? What are they asking us? You know, we have, we have parents and community members who are paying tax dollars. We've got students who are in school and we're using those tax dollars to pay for those students. So why aren't we making sure that we're actually doing what's asked of us, but also what is being asked of us by the person that we're trying to help? So I really think it comes down to, you know, really connecting with everybody involved. Because if we're making assumptions, then there's a huge chance that we're missing something or something we never even saw or has never been brought up before.
Thank you. Joshua?
You know, this, this question affects schools and also affects the whole, the whole country. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's obviously become a huge sort of bone of contention between a very factious country. And, you know, I think what it all comes down to is just is being tolerant. And we somehow seem to have lost that in the, in the, in the past, you know, four, eight years or so. And the question is, how do we get it back? And, you know, I think it just, it's, it's a matter of how you view things. It's a matter of mindset. And I think that mostly comes from leadership. It's something that's very hard to change. And, you know, there's, there's probably some specific things that can be done to kind of institute that change. But in the end, I think it's just, you know, you have to hire, you have to have, you have to have leaders in place that are for tolerance, and you have to have them being able to hire people that are for tolerance and have that displayed consistently. You know, at the board level, in the classrooms, in the leadership of the schools, in all the extracurriculars. And, yeah. That's what it's about.
Thank you. Alex, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure, please.
All right. And school board members are responsible for protecting the interests of all students regardless of disability, ethnicity, religion, gender, or sexual orientation. What specific actions would you like to take as a school board member to protect and promote the interest of marginalized students?
So I want to start by saying that we are smarter and stronger together. We need to make sure that all the voices are active and we seek and solicit input from everyone. And when we make a decision at the policy at the board level, we need to make sure we actively think not just who's here, but who's not here, who may be affected by this policy, and we need to actively seek out their input and their ideas as well, too. The beauty of public education is the rich diversity of language, gender, ethnicity, you know, socioeconomic status, you name it. And I want my children growing up in that diverse world and learning how to function in that diverse world because that's, that's the world we we will raise our children in as well, too. And that's the world they need to function in as as adults, too. I'm dyslexic and didn't read until fifth grade, actually. And I benefited from individualized attention to really get me up to standard so that I could, I could successfully be a good student and become a physician I am today. So I owe, I remember so clearly what it was like as a second grader not being able to read and everyone around me reading and thinking I was stupid and thinking I was an idiot. So I think we need to make sure we really need to support all of our students in very individual ways so they can show up and be their best self. And so the, again, the beauty is that huge diversity. The challenge is using limited resources to meet into every individual wherever it needs to be. So I think that there historically, there had been some institutional policies which have been put in place which promote certain groups and and policies which have been put in place, which promote certain groups and, and unintentionally or unintentionally, as it may be, harm others as well. And we need to take a very strong and active look at that to make sure that every single student is showing up and getting the tools and resources that they need to be their best selves. So that they're, again, mentally healthy and well, and so that they can learn their best as well. Because if they, if they don't feel safe, be it physically, psychologically, emotionally, there's no way that they can learn as well too. And lastly, we need to lead by example. We need to make sure we have a diversity, uh, of teachers and staff that can mentor and, and help our students so they all succeed as well too.
Thank you. Joshua, this question goes to you. Many students rely on the school lunch program and yet lots of families lament the poor quality of food served at school. Given structural impediments such as government guidelines and inadequate funding, what would you do to improve the quality of food on the CUSD campuses?
Yeah. I've actually tasted some of the, some of the bag lunches that the kids brought home. And, um, it's, it's awful. I, I mean, it, it's just, um, I don't know if it's worse, um, than it was when I was a kid, but, um, you know, the, the, the whole, actually, you know, the whole country has this problem. I was in, uh, when I, I missed the last thing because I was in Europe for, for nine days and I, I lived, uh, you know, abroad in Europe. And, um, it's just, it's striking how, how different the food is there than it is here. You know, and, and it's sort of hard to put your finger on, but it just like, you sort of feel like lighter, you know, when you're, when you, uh, when I travel abroad, because I presume it's just, you know, it's a lack of, or, or a much lower amount of, of processing of the food. And, um, clearly, you know, the food that the kids are getting, you know, they're getting because of the guidelines in terms of, you know, shelf life and stability and that sort of thing. And that leads to, you know, a product that, you know, that meets, meets certain guidelines, but then it's not even really food anymore. It's calories, but it's not good calories. Um, and then at the same time, you know, we have like truckloads of broccoli and green beans and and that sort of thing, getting, getting dumped and thrown away, um, you know, every day. And the, and then the question becomes, you know, it's like, obviously we have all this great food that's getting thrown away and we have all of this crappy food that's being given to the kids. Like where's, you know, what's the disconnect here? You gotta get the fresh food into the hands of the kids and get the crappy food. I don't know, they'll stop, stop producing it no matter how shelf stable it is. And, um, you know, the question is how you do that? I don't know how you do it, but I'm going to figure it out. I promise, that's my campaign promise.
Thank you, Alex.
So I literally have this conversation with my patients in the hospital and the clinic every single day. And I'm a huge believer in what's called lifestyle medicine. So diet, sleep, exercise, stress relief, those four things are going to do more for your, your mental and your physical health than any pill I could ever prescribe. And so I'm constantly preaching the importance of a healthy, plant-based, non-processed food, uh, as absolutely critical and foundational. So I think it's really important. I think it's great that we can provide food and lunches for, for all of our students and not just those who are more vulnerable or may not be able to, to afford lunches. But I also agree that, I mean, I remember this very clearly when, when the guidelines, uh, last came out, you know, pizza was categorized as a vegetable because it had tomato sauce. Pizza is not a vegetable. Pizza is a highly processed, uh, food. And so I think if we can do everything we can to get rid of the highly processed foods. Now, again, part of our, this is our hands are tied because of, uh, policies from Sacramento and from DC. And I think we as board members can really then advocate to, to our policymakers in Sacramento to say, hey, look, you know, these nutritional guidelines are, are not based on, on science, on evidence of what we know about what a healthy diet really is as well too. So, um, we need to think about how we can, how we can expand our influence just beyond our, our school district, because a lot of this is, is limited from what we can do locally. It has to do with ed policy from a state level. If it was my, up to me, we'd have a, a CUSD farm where we teach students horticulture and how to grow foods. And then we'd use those fresh fruits and vegetables in our schools as well too. Centralizing our nutrition services makes sense, uh, from a logistic point of view. But then you run into these issues with, with transportation and, and barriers and then packaging, which again, leads to additional waste as well too. So I think there's multiple different aspects here that we need to touch on. A lot of this unfortunately is probably beyond the control locally and we need to make sure we advocate, uh, to Sacramento and to DC uh, as, as community leaders to make sure we really help improve the, the food quality, but also educate our parents and our students about what health foods actually are.
Thank you. Aaron, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
All right. Many students rely on the school lunch program and yet many families lament the poor quality of food served at school. Given structural impediments such as government guidelines and inadequate funding, what would you do to improve the quality of food on the CUSD campuses?
First thing, the first thing I, I'd wonder is, and not being a Claremont native or having gone through the school district, when did they stop cooking school lunch? Because when you're actually cooking food from raw ingredients, you have a significantly higher chance of cooking something that's good for you. Because it's not packed with preservatives, it's not full of sugar. And probably it's going to taste better for the kids. Additionally, it's not going to be something that's packaged in plastic. It's not going to be something that's going to end up in the landfill. And so I think it comes down to, you know, what's feasible? But also, you know, there, there's, there's multiple aspects to it. Is it feasible? What's the cost? What's the change up? What is possible? But it also goes back to education. Because, yeah, kids eat school lunch once a day. They may participate in school breakfast, but they may, they're eating outside of school. Considering every human eats, why not include good food education for kids? You know, yes, it's okay to have sugar. But in proportion, we understand sugar has negative long-term consequences. We understand too much fat has like negative long-term consequences. But that doesn't make it bad. Too much or too little of anything, everything's on a scale. So why not teach people, hey, your body needs these things. Your body needs a little bit of it and a lot of that. Let's have a, let's develop a positive relationship with food. And maybe even make it part of the classes. I'm, I'm sure that kids would love to be able to cook their own lunch or cook for other people. Why not teach them some service skills as well?
Thank you so much. And this next question will go to Alex. CUSD, like many school districts in California, are facing declining enrollment. What are the strategies you suggest for dealing with this issue?
Yeah, so this is not unique to Claremont. Statewide, uh, California, very expensive state to live in. A lot of younger families can't afford to live here. They're moving all those places. And so I think overall, uh, student enrollment is declining everywhere across the state. So it's not unique to CUSD. But then we have to exist within the, the, the microcosm, uh, as well too. Historically, we've always been right at seven thousand students for decades. We were at sixty-eight hundred students last year. I think we're projected to go down to sixty-seven hundred students, uh, next year as well too. So we are, we are in this sort of battle, so to speak, with our neighboring school districts to, to maintain and recruit students. So I think one of the, the, the foundations of Claremont and part of the reason I moved here is through, so my three children could attend fantastic, high-quality public education. That's one of the, one of the big draws to Claremont. So if we continue to build on that legacy of, of excellence when there are schools, if we build something that's unique, we're going to attract students from Upland, from Montclair, from Laverne, uh, from Pomona to, to want to come and want to do inter-district transfers to make sure we can maintain our high, uh, our, our student population essentially. Because as many may know, our, our funding from the state is directly proportioned based on the number of students and the number of the students, those the number of days those students are in school as well. And so it's really important that we build programs, that we engage parents, that we engage community members to create something that people want to be here. People want to move to Claremont. People want to have inter-district transfers from other, uh, neighboring school districts. So that we can continue to keep our numbers up, so we can continue to provide the amazing, uh, uh, support that we do as well for, for all of our different programs, for all of our different students. It's, it's a challenging issue. It's certainly, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach to this. But again, if we all kind of sit down together and collaborate and really think through this, both for the short and the long term, I think we're ultimately going to be able to come up with some, some really good solutions to keep Claremont statistics amazing and, and progressing and, and, and moving forward as well too. And not just rest on our laurels of academic excellence in the past.
Thank you. Aaron? You're muted.
Still have, still here, I had to take the dog out, sorry.
Got it. And the, do you need me to repeat the question?
Uh, no, I'm good. So I actually spoke about this on the active Claremont forum. I think the biggest proponent, uh, of change that is resonating as a positive change across the country has been the idea of school choice. Meaning that the government has a set amount of money that is dedicated towards a student and that goes through the cogs of the machine and that helps largely fund how schools work. But one of the things that happens when you allow for school change or for school choice is that a student and their family can now take that money and apply it to the school of choice, the place where they really want their kid to, uh, be educated. And that's a, a big marker for if, if you have school choice in California, then we can continue to build on the foundation we already have as a well-known school district. And we can encourage inner, uh, inter-district transfers. But it can be more fluid. It can be simply at the request of the students and the parents. And so, um, I'm a proponent for school choice because kids everywhere, bad neighborhoods, good neighborhoods, bad cities, good cities, deserve to have a chance at the best education. And sometimes they're stuck and they can't do that. So why not give them an opportunity to get to a place where they can get a better, a better education? Thank you.
All right. And Joshua?
So this is actually an operations research question, uh, which is, uh, which is really, really interesting. And it's probably something that a lot of people don't, um, you know, don't understand about, about what's going on. Right now, you know, as I said, we get about a third of the students in, in our district from, from neighboring districts. Right? And so, and that's great, um, you know, for us, um, because, uh, we get to keep our capacity where it is. Um, and it's bad for them because, you know, they're losing, you know, they're, they're, they're losing students at a faster rate than, um, than we are. And, um, so, you know, there's, I guess there's two ways to approach it. One is that we, um, you know, continue our efforts to be a really great school system and, you know, put out PR stuff and, you know, get even more people interested in coming to Claremont. And then, um, you know, we're sucking more students away from our neighbors, um, you know, for our own benefit, which isn't sustainable in the long term. Especially because, you know, the school systems, our neighbors, you know, they're not obligated to give us their students. They have, they're doing it now and they have done it in the past, but they're certainly not obligated to do that. So they have to release, any student that applies for an inter-district transfer has to get released from those, from those districts. So it's not something that's, you know, that, that's not an endless well of, you know, of students that's going to solve the problem. In the long term, a, and, and the reason this is a problem is because our capacity is chunky, right? You have an elementary school and it has eight hundred students. If you go from, you know, seven thousand to sixty-eight hundred, you know, to sixty, you know, you gotta get down to sixty-two hundred and then you don't need that elementary school anymore. And you gotta close it so your capacity meets your, you know, demand. But that's hard to do. It's hard to close an elementary school and we certainly don't want to do that. What makes the, what, what's interesting about this area in Land Empire is that, you know, our school district is tiny. LA Unified School District is like, I don't know, sixty times us. And, um, you know, if we were to combine our school district with the neighboring towns, it would make this, you know, decrease in, decrease in demand problem much, much easier. It would also make, um, you know, the problem that Aaron discussed, uh, a, a little bit easier as well. Obviously that's a huge move, but, oh. Sorry, I got carried away. It's a much longer discussion.
Thank you so much. And let's see, Aaron, this question goes to you. Chronic absenteeism is one of the most pressing problems facing our district as it has a direct impact on student achievement and the district budget. What ideas might you bring to the board in an effort to combat this issue?
I think this is kind of an issue that, that this goes back to the parents and students. If, I mean, and, you know, what age group is the student? Is it extenuating circumstances or is this just a, a choice made by the student? Is this a choice made by the family? And I think really re-engaging with them at a personal level and showing that we can care for the individual as a student, not as a dollar figure on a piece of paper to try and, and, and reach out to them and find, you know, is there something the school district can do to, uh, to maybe bridge a gap? That's, um, keeping somebody from being able to make it to school all the time? Or are there personal issues going on that maybe they just need somebody to talk to? They just need a school counselor who they were unaware may have been able to help with such issues. So I think oftentimes it's, you know, there, see the need, meet the need. How can we reach out to the students and the parents and say, hey, you know, you got an education. What can we do to help sure, make sure that your kid gets an education? So I think it's, it's back to that, you know, how can we? What can we do to really achieve success at a personal level at a, at an honest level? Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua?
So, um, I don't have the numbers on this, um, but I, I, I will look into it. The, um, but I do have some hypotheses. I, I, you know, well, let me say this first. It's interesting because whenever a student is absent and absent means absent for roll call at the beginning of the school day. Apparently it doesn't mean, you know, you can show up to school for an hour and then you leave. Apparently the school still gets credit for that day. And by credit, I mean that, you know, the school has to report the absentee figures. The more people that are, and they get penalized literally, uh, you know, from the state budget for every, every day that a student, any student missed, literally for every day. So it's a bit of a crazy wonky system, but I guess it does create, uh, that reasonable or that beneficial actually incentive to keep kids in school. I would assume that the reason why, you know, if the absentee rate is larger here than it is in neighboring cities, it's because of all the inter-district transfers. And, um, because I assume they're, you know, they're not guaranteed bus transportation, right? So, um, that's probably what's happening, although I'm not for sure. You know, if you're out in Laverne and you don't have a bus coming and your car breaks down, then you can't get to school. And, you know, it, that, that would sort of be a reasonable, I guess, um, kind of hypothesis. If that's the case, then, you know, the way to fix is to not have as many inter-district transfers, which, um, you know, which then causes other problems like we are, you know, our student base shrinks. So these are just hypotheses. I'd have to look at the figures, but, um, you know, I, I don't know. I, I don't know for sure why, um, you know, why the absentee rate is higher here than it is elsewhere. But, um, yeah, it's something you gotta look at in detail. I don't know.
Thank you. Alex, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay, thanks. So, so again, chronic absenteeism is, is not a Claremont unique issue. It's statewide at this point too. You know, we spent the past three years telling people, if you're sick, stay home, which is really the right thing to do. You obviously don't want to come to school if you're going to be spreading, uh, germs or illness to other people as well too. But we, now we need to sort of help reshift that framework a little bit too, to make sure that we are, you know, not keeping kids home unnecessarily. So my, my youngest son, who's a first grader at, at Condit is like my, my atopic kid. He has allergies and he's always the first in the family to get sick. And he missed several days just because he was, he was sick a lot. And, and, you know, I got a letter in the mail saying, hey, you, he's missed five days, you know, what's going on? And I think that individual outreach is really important too. Because every, every absenteeism and chronic absenteeism is, is unique. There's different factors. And so, uh, again, outreach to those families and figure out other, are there transportation issues? Are there social issues? Are there other sort of societal factors that we can help address as a school district as well? Can we collaborate with, with neighborhood parents, um, and, and other groups to help encourage people to go to school as well too? Furthermore, I, I think we need to make sure, make sure a school is really engaging and really fun for students. And if students don't want to go to school, you know, we all know if our kids bug us enough, they tend to get what they want, right? And so if we can make sure that we are encouraging our kids to go to school and incentivizing our kids to go to school, so they can understand that too, then that's going to be a really important influence as home as well too. Parent education is absolutely critical. And then furthermore, and lastly, actually, our, our, our state senator, Senator Portantino has a, a bill right now in the state senate that would adjust this, this mechanism, this funding mechanism a little bit. So it wouldn't be based just on the number of days you see the, the whites of the students' eyes. It'd be really more kind of a holistic approach to funding for education and individual students, knowing that, you know, people get sick and things happen at home and cars break down. And so again, thinking not just locally, but also kind of how can we advocate in Sacramento to really adjust some of the, some of the, the, the institutional and structural problems which has created this, this issue as well too.
Thank you. And this will be our last question and we will go to Joshua. How would you balance your decisions as a member of the board with the input of parents, students, teachers and other stakeholder groups?
Uh, well, this is, uh, this is my, my main thing. You know, I, I just, I, from, from what I have seen, there is just not a lot of engagement, um, in the, um, in, in the school system at the, at the board level. Which is interesting because there's so much engagement at the volunteer level. You know, I had to fight for my spot to be a volunteer at the school, literally with other parents. And yet you go to a school board meeting and there's no one there and for good reason, because they're so damn boring. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think there, there's so many. Um, but um, yeah, I mean, I I think there there's so many things that that the school board uh should be doing and can do um in order to make it, you know, make it, make it, make the the decision-making process, the information, the discussions um relevant and interesting to the community. Um, because right now, um, there just, there aren't that many people engaged. And um, there's certainly not, uh, you know, and and the and the type of people that are engaged are certainly not representative of the student base um on, you know, on by by any, by any measure. Um, so um, you know, I I think, like, I don't know. A week ago, I got an email uh from the superintendent that said very vaguely, there's been some incidents around racism and show up at the school board. And that was the first message I'd ever gotten that encouraged me to actually go to a school board meeting and listen in. Um, and it was so vague that I didn't really understand what was going on. But um, but, you know, that's a very, very small step in a, you know, in a huge sort of realm of opportunity that could be done. We could, we could be, you know, putting the word out that there are school board meetings every two weeks. And this is what you can do, and this is how you can participate. And then, you know, have the have the school board actually present things that are accessible and interesting to the parents. Give the parents sort of the 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 idea that, you know, their voice is important and they should show up. And not just, you know, give them two minutes where you have to like do this and that, but, you know, really bring people into the fold.
Thank you. Uh, Alex?
Thanks so much. So I think it's absolutely critical that we we engage all of our community and all of our stakeholders because these are decisions and policy issues which affect everybody. Um, and so I think encouraging people to attend board meetings, encouraging people to understand their role in in effective governance as well, too. But I think a lot of the the work goes on even behind the scenes. And and I think school board members really need to serve as a liaison to their community as well, too, and and be available and be accessible to to meet with individuals and and groups and stakeholders to make sure that we are representing their their views and their beliefs as well, too. I think it's really important to to think about also that, yes, you know, trustee area four is geographically representing us uh or electing whoever the next board member is, but really that board member is beholden to the entire school district as well, too, and not just sort of the geographic area. And so making sure that we are accessible, we are accountable, uh, we help work together. Um, a lot of my work at the uh as a board of trustee member for the California Medical Association has been navigating a lot of these, you know, diverse perspectives and 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 geographical uh challenges of of physicians from across the state of California. Um, and I think those skills and tools that I that I've developed there, I can definitely work to improve the engagement locally as well here in Claremont, too. Because again, as I said before, if you wanna go far, you go together. And it's more challenging, it takes more time, uh, it's a little bit messier sometimes, but building those strong relationships um so people can feel that they can entrust you, they can, they can uh uh enclose some of that sometimes personal information and personal feelings about what's going on is absolutely critically critically important as well.
Thank you. And Aaron, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I'm good. Um, I I I appreciate that all three of us are pretty much on the same page on this. Um, I think this is uh COVID really amplified something that was already growing in regards to governance in general, but I think more specifically towards school boards. There's this thing going on where they talk about, you know, oh, it's transparency. Well, an email is not transparency. It's, yeah, you checked the box that you informed people, that you did something, where you invited them. But I think there's this gap that's not being filled where, you know, I don't wanna drag people to a school board meeting because they can be dry, especially when there's nothing exciting on the agenda. But there needs to be a level of understanding that unless you're there, unless you're involved, unless you're voicing your opinion, unless you're voicing your concerns about the little stuff on a regular basis, unless you're emailing back, unless you're responding, then there's this gap of assumption that the school board has to go on. And they're gonna make decisions, and if people aren't talking, then you can't blame them. But we also have to look at ourselves and go, hey, you know, let's get more involved. This is a community thing. It's not just, oh, I elected a school board member and they're gonna do the thing I needed them to do. It's check in on them, email them, ask them questions. I think it would be great if we would have a way for school board members outside of a school board meeting and outside of just the the regularly scheduled visits, to be able to actually be engaged in school on a a little bit larger level so that there is more visibility and there's more chances for students to ask questions of them, for parents to ask questions, rather than wait for a school board meeting and their three-minute timer and and that kind of stuff. Because it is, it's frustrating, especially like an example, this last school board meeting, parent had technical difficulties with Zoom, got in, started talking, oh, well, you weren't talking at the right time, mute. That's the kind of stuff that really offputs the school board actually wanting to connect with the community. It's like, no, that stuff's gotta change.
Thank you. Before we move to closing remarks, I would like to remind everybody that this special election will be held on July twenty-fifth. Residents of trustee area four should look out for sample ballots in the mailbox starting the week of July fifth. Uh, for closing remarks, we are going to go ahead and begin with.
Rachel, just one minute. There are a few questions in the messages.
We unfortunately are out of time for today. We have actually quite a few more questions that we could ask, but I tried to cover most topics. Um, I invite everybody to email the candidates. I'm sure they'll tell you some contact info. So if there's any other questions you have of them, please reach out. Um, our closing remarks will begin with Alex.
Excuse me. Sorry about that. Um, well, thank you again for for this opportunity to to share some of my thoughts and ideas. As a parent, um, as as an educator, I teach medical students in graduate medical education. Um, as an expert in in health uh and health policy, I really think that I bring a lot of uh very, very robust skills to the table. And I think I would be able to be a strong advocate for our students, for our teachers, uh, for our staff, truly make sure that we prioritize um our our mental health, our physical health, because that's ultimately what's foundational to improving the educational quality of of Claremont School Districts. We have been amazing. We have done fantastic work over the the decades uh prior to this. Uh, we need to make sure we continue to keep Claremont Schools excellent, to keep moving forwards, to make sure we include all voices at the table, to make sure that we lower barriers to to engagement and involvement as well, too. Um, so I am absolutely committed to uh to this work. I'm absolutely committed to CUSD. Um, the amount of uh involvement in community support and people I've connected with in the last a few months has has been amazing. It's made me sort of further invested in this work and further invest in our community as well, too. For people who are interested, you can, you can go to my website, McDonald Four, the number four, cusd.com. Uh, you can email me there. You can connect with me there. I wanna hear from everyone. I wanna share uh here what you, what your concerns are about so that we can make sure we continue to collaboratively uh build an amazing school district as well. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Aaron?
Uh, thanks again for having us. Uh, it was a, it was a bummer. We didn't get you in the twenty-twenty-two season, but I'm sure this group was rather busy during a regular election season. Um, and I wanna thank everybody for their questions and their participation in this. Uh, the these are the kind of things that I really enjoy, not that I've been a candidate forever. Um, but just being able to actually interact with the community, especially in a community where um I I'm the outsider, I'm the new guy. I'm not from California, and so it's been a real privilege to, you know, break out of my own shell and get out there and knock on doors and talk to people and have people just walk up to me, be like, hey, I wanna talk to you about something. Okay, let's let's engage. And that's just been, it's been a highlight of my life um to be able to to really start digging into this community and getting to know uh the kids, the parents, the teachers, uh, other members of the community. And you can reach out to me. Uh, website is Peterson S O N for the number CUSD. Um, I'm out there, and let me know if you got questions. Email me. Thank you.
And Joshua?
Um, so my website is joshuarodgers.vote, which I think is an awesome website. So I would love to have people visit it. And um, if you do, you can um, you know, find my contact information. But um, but mostly I just prefer if you send me a text message um to my uh to my mobile phone, which is two, one, two, two, zero, three, one, two, one, four. Um, please send me a text message there. Um, I found uh the 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 forums and the, you know, the 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 ability to get the word out and, you know, to whoever's interested in this election is very limited. And um, I'd love to have people contact me. I love to um to talk to people one-on-one. I'm a bit of an introvert, so I'm probably not gonna be out in big groups. Um, but um, but I really enjoy one-to-one or small group conversations, um, and I wish there were more opportunities to do so. Um, any opportunity that you guys provide me, the voters of District Four, I will certainly um be very happy to uh to engage with you. And um, yeah, look forward to the next few weeks. It would be fun.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us today. The League Women Voters enjoys hosting these forums, and we appreciate the participation of all candidates. Um, to answer really quick to Aaron's question about the previous one, we hold forums when we are invited to either by candidates or by community members. And we hold them when we can have a majority of candidates. So if we are not invited and if we don't have a majority of candidates agree to participate, that's when we don't hold them. We are always interested in educating the public on all things election-related. And this video today will be posted in the next day or two on our YouTube channel and for everybody to go back and watch again or for people that have missed this. Uh, with that, we will close out this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.